Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So Dawn, those developments.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order at five thirty-three, I think it is. And for the Town of Rocky, Rocky Hill Economic Development Commission. And this is a special meeting on Monday, June the twenty-seventh, in the Town Council Chamber. Okay? We have a call to order. I think we have everyone here that.
Ryan.
Yeah.
Ryan should be here.
Ryan should be here, okay. Okay. I'm looking for an approval to the minutes of. Let me get the right date here.
January eleventh?
January the eleventh. Can I have a motion, please?
Sure.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
Okay, can I have a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay. Everybody eyed, okay. I don't see anyone from the public. So we will move on to item four. Have we, have we heard from the chamber in terms of anyone coming?
No, I have not heard.
Okay.
But maybe a quick update?
Yes.
Just some news. The chamber has been working with the Middlesex Chamber of Commerce over the past few months. And they will be joining as a, the Middlesex Chamber as the Rocky Hill Division of the Middlesex Chamber of Commerce.
Oh.
And it will greatly benefit their operation and also all the, all the membership as well. Tap into the resources that the Middlesex Chamber has. I don't know if you want to add anything.
No, we're very excited about it, though.
What was the correct name? The Middlesex Chamber of?
Congress. Middlesex Chamber of Congress.
But for Rocky Hill District?
Oh, Rocky Hill Division.
Rocky Hill Division, thank you.
Okay. And I'm understanding that everybody in Rocky Hill Chamber is kind of happy about it.
We're very excited about it.
Very excited, yeah, okay.
They bring a lot of benefits that, you know, we as a smaller chamber want, we're unable to offer to our members.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's good. All right. Okay. We have a rather lengthy list of the director's updates, okay? I hope you brought yourself a can of soda or something, or a glass of water.
But the, the reason, first of all, the reason why we scheduled a special meeting is that I won't be here for the regularly scheduled, scheduled meeting, which is next Tuesday.
Uh-huh.
I'll be on vacation for a few weeks. So I thought maybe instead of waiting until after I come back or to the next quarterly meeting, I'd like to give you an update now in case there are questions in the meantime. I'm gonna be gone for three weeks, so you may have questions. So I thought maybe we can go through this list of projects and activities.
I'll ask a personal question. You don't have to answer, but are you going to any place exciting for three whole weeks?
Um, kind, oh, I'm just going to Australia.
Oh, to Australia, oh, wow, okay.
And Singapore, yeah, both.
And where?
Singapore.
And Singapore, oh, that's right, you're my favorite place on earth.
A little hot for me, but.
A little hot for you, yeah, this is not the time of the year to go. Okay.
Okay.
It falls in your court.
Director's report, item A. Just want to give you a quick update on the Ames redevelopment project. As you know, that was approved for two hundred and thirteen units, twenty thousand square feet of commercial space. And you might have noticed today, if you drove by this morning, there's some equipment in the parking lot. They will start in July, maybe next week, if not the next week, the week after, on the remediation portion of the project. Primarily on the building. Whatever asbestos or PCBs might be in the air conditioning and what have you. And then, once they're complete with that, which should take about five months, they will be starting demolition immediately after that. And the demolition, they estimate to be five months also. The property did transfer to the new owner, to Belfanti's, to Belfanti Companies, or a subsidiary of Belfanti Companies. And they will be getting a brownfield remediation grant, which the town had applied for on their behalf. And we will be a pass-through. The money, the grant money passed through the town of Rocky Hill to Belfanti Companies or their subsidiary for the remediation work. It was a nine hundred ninety-nine thousand dollar grant.
Okay.
Do they know that they bought that architectural place?
Yeah, and part of that, part of the, the whole plan is the little outbuilding, the engineering company TNT Structural. That is there right now, that little building. Belfanti also bought that building. And they'll demolish that and incorporate into the site plan that piece of property also. There'll be two parks, one in the north end, one on the south end, for public use. Any questions?
I have a question. So what's the anticipation date of completion? For this whole project?
There is really no anticipation date right now.
No.
They're in the process of getting cost estimates, which change rapidly in this environment. Usually these projects are maybe eighteen months.
Okay.
You know, typically. Twelve to eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
They're not looking to phase it?
No, no phasing is involved in this. It's gonna be complete knockdown and complete structure, complete, complete build-out and occupancy.
That's good.
Item B, forty-five Evans Road Brownfield Assessment Project. This is the property owned by ADC Enterprises. Al and Laurel Chulie. They own a property that is on Evans Road, just before you get to the railroad trestle. And then they own three other pieces on the other side of the railroad tracks with three thousand feet of Connecticut River frontage. It is considered a brownfield. We applied for brownfield cleanup grant on their behalf in an effort to incentivize the redevelopment of that property. There is, as we all know, Boondoggle Brewery.
Right.
They've been interested in that property for, since two thousand and nineteen. But they've been reluctant, as has anybody who's ever looked at that property, to go any further because of the unknowns with the environmental. So we applied for an assessment grant, we're in the process of doing all the state required paperwork to get approval, final approval. And when that happens, we can hire a licensed environmental professional to go out, take the phase one, phase two, and phase three environmental assessments and determine what's in the ground. It's a cost that Boondoggle or a developer may not have to do in the future. And it's just an attempt to get this property redeveloped. And we're working with the town attorney right now on a, on an agreement with ADC Enterprises to make sure that everybody's on the same page as we move forward. Should I move on to item C? Okay. Longhorn Restaurant. They are in the process with planning and zoning for approval of a new restaurant where Dakota currently stands. Dakota is not opening up, as you know. So Long, Darden Industries will scrape that building off and build a new fifty-seven hundred square foot Dakota Steakhouse. Pretty simple. They're restructuring some of the parking.
Is it the same size as the Dakota building?
It's half. Dakota's about ten thousand square feet.
Parking had been an issue, right?
Yeah, and Longhorn is about fifty-seven, fifty-six hundred square feet.
Looks nice.
Let's see, item D, Stepney Place, the redevelopment expansion proposal. They went before planning and zoning on a preliminary application, informal basis, just to get some input. They would like to build, as you can, as I put in your package, another seventy, what is it, seventy-six, seventy-one units of additional apartments on their property along the rear, because I don't know if you know, but, you know, they have their main building. And the rear portion of the building spans parallel to the, to the south, parallel to the Silasstein Highway for quite a bit. So they have a lot of land back there to put up additional units, which they want to do. There is a changing philosophy on a lot of these, even the office buildings that we have, or not just us, but all over the country. What to do with these empty office buildings. As they remain empty, the values decrease, they'll be decreasing in the future. So the most reasonable, most cost-effective and most valuable thing to do is convert many of them to a mixed-use type of development with the residential component. It drives off, drives up the cost, it allows the owner to have tenants. And I anticipate probably another development along the Silasstein Highway coming in for similar requests. So we'll see what happens. I don't know if the commission wants to take a, maybe in the future, wants to take a position on, on this type of redevelopment, I guess, proposal of some of these properties along the Silasstein. We've spoken to many commercial realtors in the past, and even in the near, in the near past, that you really need to get a residential component included along Silasstein Highway if you want the Silasstein Highway to actually succeed. Because retail and commercial follows residential. Residential, if they have a commercial customer base, then a retailer will locate there or a restaurant.
Ray, how many apartments are at Stepney Place now?
Good question. I used to know that, but I don't know. I don't, I don't remember how many apartments there. I think I know how many kids are there, but I don't know how many apartments.
So right now, where they're going to build the seventy-two units are, it's just an open space right now? There's nothing there?
There is, there is a building that the electrical contractor union used to occupy before they relocated to Dividend Road.
Okay.
So there's a building in back, and also a daycare, they used to use for daycare center too.
Will they be taking those down?
Either taking, yeah, probably taking them down.
Oh, I see that, I'm sorry.
If, if they can, what, what happened, has to happen is Planning and Zoning Commission will have to modify the zoning regulations to allow this type of use. Because the only area in town that allows a mixed-use residential component is in the town centers of district, which is Ames area and Elm Street, Glastonbury Avenue intersection.
Well, this one doesn't include any type of commercial, does it?
No.
It would just still be all residential?
It'd just be the additional residential, seventy-two units.
Any more questions on that item?
Okay, item E. There is a desire to expand Center Green. You know, directly across the street from where Ames is redeveloping to close off that dogleg section on Dividend Road at Pratt Street and incorporate that area into the Center Green acreage. And also, that would be a consistent and contiguous green that would actually access, you'd be able to access whatever's happening at the Ames site. Because that's gonna be right across from the, the restaurant area and the mixed-use portion of the property. So what we did, we, Community Development Services put out a bid for consulting services to do a conceptual layout plan. So we're working on that now, to get a consultant engineering firm to do a plan for us. And hopefully, we can utilize some grant money to construct and expand the, the green area. As long as DOT allows us to do that, because it's all on a state road. So there will be some traffic considerations, timing of signals and things like that, and possibly expanding left and right turn lanes. So we're gonna have to see if it actually fits into what we're trying to do.
Okay. Any, any questions on that item?
No.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay. Glastonbury Avenue Pedestrian Corridor Plant. There is also a desire to have a pedestrian connection from our town center area. You know, here, the future Ames Development, Main Street, portions of Silasstein Highway to the Connecticut River, to Ferry Park, the ferry, you know, what's, what's gonna happen down in that area. So the town went out, placed a bid to do some survey work first, to see if it's actually physically possible to fit some type of pedestrian way, sidewalk or something down Glastonbury Avenue, because it is a very narrow right-of-way. There'd be a lot of work to be had to try to not to interfere with some of those, the frontages of some of those properties. So the first phase of this is to see, to do a survey, to see if we can actually physically get something down that area. We're also looking at other ways down, I believe it's Washington, Washington Avenue. Maybe there's some pedestrian sidewalk or some type of pedestrian corridor down that way to get down to the river.
Right.
So these are options we're looking at now. Again, hopefully, we can do some of this with some grant money. Excuse me. And I also mentioned Yeah, okay, yeah, that, that was for that one. Steep Grant, Century Hills Sidewalk Connectivity Proposal. Steep Small Town Economic Assistance Program, state granting, grant funding. Announced its current round of funding, up to five hundred thousand dollars. Town Council decided to maybe, to apply for construction of a sidewalk loop on Century Hills, where there are no sidewalks. And there were about over six thousand people living in this very densely developed area with really the, no pedestrian connectivity to Cole Springs Road and then the commercial area. So we will be proposing about one point three miles of sidewalk. Yes, that would be the blue line on your map. And the service area is basically the red line on your map. So hopefully, if we're successful, we can start this project. It needs to be started, they have a requirement for shovel-ready projects. So Steve Sopolak and his engineering crew are working on developing plans right now. So we're ready when we apply, which is the deadline being August fifteenth.
Okay.
Good view of the golf course.
Yeah, it is.
I know you can plan out your shots.
Okay.
I'll have to take a copy of this.
Quick update on the Straska Town Farm. Y'all familiar with that, I assume? We're in the process of demolishing the house. Abating the lead paint and some of the asbestos first, and then the house will be coming down. So we've been working with a couple of contractors to do that project. Hopefully, that will occur in the month of July. And then, once that is down, we will start working on the remediation of the soil and then doing the site grading for the preparation of the barn and the, the land use plan that UConn is working on right now. We hired UConn School of Plant Science and Architecture, Landscape Architecture, to do a land use plan for the whole farm. Parcel A, I believe, is, or Parcel B is the active part, where the house is. Where we'll have the barn and educational facility and the community gardens and parking. And then they're also working on Parcel A, which is both fields, which are being leased by the three local farmers, and then there's a wooded area. And they are currently looking at laying out plans for trails in the wooded area. So there's a meeting tomorrow night, UConn will be presenting another grading plan for the committee to look at and to provide comments.
So is the timeframe contingent upon that meeting, determining how long it's gonna take and when they're gonna start?
Tomorrow night meeting?
Yeah.
No.
No.
No, they're separate. Now, UConn is continuing, but the, the overall implementation of the land use plan depends on the remediation and demolition of the house and the grading. We want the site grading to coordinate with UConn's landscape plan. CGI Town Video Renewal. We contracted with CGI almost three years ago to develop a town video. I think you were all on the commission at the time, maybe Dawn wasn't. Have you seen the town video?
Yes.
Okay. We, we contracted with them again, they come in and renew the video for no cost to the town. So I had a welcome call, and they're gonna be sending me the old script. And we can change it or not change it. And then what happens is, we set up an appointment for the videographer, will come in for probably three or four days with his drone and take shots that, you know, that we want them to take. The last committee, it was a subcommittee of, of the, of the commission. Keep it to two people, because a third is a legal meeting. And last time, it was Larry DeBare and Sharon Mounds and me. So I need two volunteers to work on this.
I'll volunteer.
You volunteer, great.
I need another one, hopefully.
We need one more.
Thanks, Doris, before you do this.
Okay, I think I said.
It's all going back.
So it'd be John and Doris. Okay.
And let's make sure that we pick the restaurant segment, so that we have a restaurant that will.
Right. Pick something viable that's not gonna.
What did we have last time? Who went out of business?
Potso, I think you said, right?
Oh.
No, it wasn't Potso, it was the, it was the one oh, that's where the Ace is. You know, that, that, there used to be a restaurant there.
Oh, okay.
Not Thomas.
And it went out of, it went out of business before, even before we had the video out there.
Seafood. It was.
There was a restaurant next to West Side Pizza.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's called, it's called Panizo now.
Panizo, no, but it was.
But before that, it was something else.
It was a seafood.
Rosso?
Around very long.
Brizzo?
Rosso, yeah, Brizzo.
Brizzo? I couldn't remember the name of the place.
Well, we're gonna have them do some shots of the events, like the Parks Rec, they have a lot of events going on in the summer.
Okay, well, that's good.
Last time, we didn't have those, it was like the slow time of year.
Uh-huh, okay.
We also have a banner program with CGI, again, at no cost to the town. Their, their rep came to town last month, came into the office and said, we're gonna redo all those little banners. Because when we put in the light poles, the light poles were put in with fixed banner arms, welded. So we can only do those small banners. CGI will replace the small banners with large banners, and they will bring in brackets and put them up themselves at no cost. Because they thought it needed a large banner, so keep the small ones. But give the businesses that already have banners, the new larger ones, which I thought was fantastic. And hoping that that will cause maybe more interest from other businesses to buy in, once they see them up. Priority was given to, to the businesses on the Silasstein Highway between Parsonage and Elm, because that was our, where all the new light poles were. But it's not restricted to Silasstein, it's open to all businesses.
Okay.
That's about my report right now. Just a lot of, a lot of, a lot of grant work. Some projects that we're working on, now, small ones. There's an interest of another residential development on Main Street. We will be meeting again with that particular owner and developer. Any questions? Any?
I have one.
Yeah.
I apologize for going back, but can we go back to this forty-five Evans Road? That's where that brewery was gonna, that restaurant. Are they still interested if we get past the whole, you know, the land study and everything's?
Yes, he is very, he's still, he's in Weathersfield, as we all know. But he is very interested in having his production start in, at forty-five Evans. And also, over time, expand to what he had proposed.
Right.
You know, the brew pub, some of the recreational activities, the curling court. I don't know if you remember that, he wanted to propose the winter, have curling on top of the river, and so he still has that grand plan, but, you know, it would be a longer term than he originally imagined.
Okay.
But a lot is going to depend on the brownfield grant, and if they find anything, that could be significant.
If they find anything, potentially, the next step could be a brownfield cleanup grant. Either through us or through the owner himself.
Because the grant only identifies what the issues and the problems are.
What's wrong, but then the owner has to absorb that cost?
Yes.
Doesn't have to, you know.
Well, they're gonna come to the town.
Yes.
Right.
The town to absorb it.
And that we would, if, if the town council wishes, apply on the developer's behalf for a brownfield cleanup grant based on the proposal, like we did with Ames.
Right.
But we don't have, we're not obligated to do that.
Okay.
But that's actually an interesting point, so let's say the town did commit to doing that and on the behalf of the business owner. Wouldn't there have to be a commitment from the potential business owner, the potential developer, to, okay, if it goes through and it's clean, we're gonna follow through?
Yeah, the, for example, with Ames. We applied for the grant on behalf, we passed through, the assistance agreement, which is a legal document, very specific, very very, very tightly drafted assistance agreement based on their performance of building this particular project. And there are mechanisms to claw back and also to find that developer if they don't do what they say.
Right, okay, good.
Yeah, I mean, nothing is foolproof, but they, they've done as much as you can really do.
Sure, but just reasonable protections.
Yeah.
Right.
Absolutely. So Kay, is additional activities, events, any discussion? I don't really have much more to add right now.
Okay.
If you want to add to the next agenda, you know, more discussions on Ray's trip to Singapore and Australia.
We can do a PowerPoint.
I, I might, I might add that I recently actually purchased a condominium. I, I might, I might add that I recently actually purchased a condominium in Singapore.
How'd you do that?
What?
How'd you do that?
Did John find it for you?
What?
I sold it to her.
Yeah.
Well, no, you know.
Let's just hope she doesn't plan on going anytime in the near future.
It's one, it's one of two of my favorite places on earth, and, you know, I had money there and the right situation developed, and there we are.
So Ray, you have a place to stay.
Yeah.
It's at the hotel.
No, no, it's covered, it's got a tenant, okay. One of my oldest and dearest friends, who was 92 years old, okay, you know, so.
It's not a proposal yet. We just met with.
I had the money, I did her a favor.
With the owner last month. It's not public yet.
Five, five bedrooms.
I expect it.
Five bedrooms to be had.
We're going to have to go, the planning is on.
Top floor, in the middle of
amend the regulations.
Chinese section of Singapore.
I thought there was a hold on further revenge.
Because she's Chinese.
That's beautiful.
I'm probably mistaken, but I thought there was.
There's a mixed-use zone.
That's good to know, Brian.
If you want residential.
I know someone that has something over there now. We're on Kay, additional activities and events.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you, Brian.
Sorry about that.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
All right.
Hold that, Brian.
Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Yeah. I motion to adjourn.
Unless Brian has any questions.
Okay.
I'll watch the video.
We're all out of here then, okay? Everybody, everybody wish.
Yeah, safe trip.
Wish, wish our illustrious guy here a very pleasant trip to Australia.